Start over again.
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hi. Sorry, County Commissar Court came to order this Tuesday, twenty-sixth day of October, twenty twenty-one. These scheduled for nine thirty a.m., County Court Ram is now nine thirty-seven a.m. Due to some technical difficulties, thank you, Austin, for the force. You all rise. Austin has offered to open some prayers, so Austin.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this wonderful day. Thank you for bringing us all here together. And please guide our county leaders' decisions so we can make the best decisions for everybody in the county as a whole. And in your name, great amen.
Amen. Johnson pledges.
Pledge.
Pledge. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with their just justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Austin, I told you to pray from Astros and forgot.
Please give us a four.
Thank you. Okay, if you noticed outside, we're gonna get right into why we have a cram for yesterday. So, and that's under one point two, discuss consider redistricting. Just as the base and constable precincts produce total number of precincts through the four or five. But if you notice on the votes board out there, we posted the rules of procedure, conduct in the quorum and court meetings of the Commissioners' Court, and as Presiding Officer, it's my duty to ensure this meeting is run accordingly. So, that guy's got a gun and a taser, so, you know. Read those roles and remember. This is Commissioner Collins' item, so I'm gonna turn over to Commissioner to start with. Would you like me to hear from the?
No, let's go ahead and hear from them.
Okay, let's go to citizens' comments, and if you read the rules, there, we allow six people to discuss, to talk, six public members, let's talk for six against, if there are. And then what I'm gonna do is allow each elected official to speak three minutes if they're wanting to reach that. So, six public members and then elected officials, get three minutes each. So, first off, any elected official that wants to speak, Constable Stanley? All right, we need to make sure that microphone's on.
Oh, yes, sir, you'll make sure that button in front, make sure it's.
I think it's repaired screen now.
It is, and you have three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, starting now. Take him out, I should put my glasses on first, right? This, when this first come up, this population ratio of Chambers County being compared to Harris County ratio and the per number, number of constables and JP offices in Chambers County compared to surrounding counties like Harris County. When you look at this and you look at, and I'm gonna stick to the constable part of this morning. There being eight constable offices, eight precincts in Harris County, six in Chambers County. Anybody's first thought is gonna be, wow, Harris County, eight constable precincts, Chambers County, six. Why in the world would Chambers County need six? So, that being said, I've done a little research, I started calling some constables, but we have a Justice of the Peace Constable Director listed in all of them in Texas. So, I started making some phone calls, just to kind of get the facts of matter. And when you look at the facts of the matter, and I, what I was trying to research is to find out how many full-time paid deputies each one of these constable departments has in Harris County, precinct by precinct. And these numbers, when I started getting them, it kind of staggered me. I'm like, yeah, six, six is not a big number when you look at the Chambers County now. Precinct one, Harris County Constable Office, full-time employees, and I'm talking about office staff too. You know, I think for each one of them, average, what I figured out is probably got about twenty to thirty people working in the offices, clerks, and whatever else they do in the office. But paid, full-time deputies and office staff, precinct one in Harris County has four hundred ninety-nine. Precinct two has eighty-seven. Precinct three has a hundred and fifty-four paid deputies, hundred and seventy-eight, including office staff and people that work in the office. Precinct four, five hundred eighty-four. Precinct five, four hundred thirty-two. Precinct six, one hundred and eight. I was unable to get precinct seven, I was hoping she'd call me before, before I got up here this morning. But I'm gonna take a rough guess and figure it's gonna be anywhere from maybe eighty to a hundred and seventy-eight to maybe possibly even four ninety-nine or five eighty-four. I don't know, but I know it's not gonna be six. Precinct eight is nine. That being said, one of the constables also told me he carries thirty reserve deputies, and he is still shorthanded. So, now that's Harris County. If you look back to Chambers County, now I think if you talk about us having six constables and JPs in Chambers County, I think that's a really small number. That being said, this is, this is about more than my job as constable, okay? I may possibly retire at the end of this year, I don't know yet. I'd like maybe go one more. I love my job, I love being there for my people. But the fact of the matter is, this, this is my deal. My family lives in Double Bayou, they're gonna live there probably after I'm dead, you know, my daughter, my grandkids, my son-in-law, all my lifelong friends. I was raised in Double Bay, my father was raised in Double Bay, my grandfather was raised in Double Bay, and Carlton Carrington has made, made it known for a long time that after I lay, believe, hang my reign spurs up, he wants to take the torch and carry it on. Carlton Carrington is a guy that was honored here a while back by Mr. Abbott for pulling somebody out of a burning car over there. He'd been in law enforcement for years, he's a trusting, honest person as you'll ever meet in your life. Yes, he was raised in Double Bay, his father was raised in Double Bay, his grandfather was raised in Double Bay. His uncle Herman Rivers was the first black person to ever be a deputy sheriff in Chambers County. There's a lot of history in these offices, there's a lot of people depend on our offices. So, what I'm asking you to do today is reconsider trying to close these offices down, because our people need us, they appreciate us. We do everything we can to give service to Chambers County, not only in our department, if anybody else needs, we're there to help them as well. So, I'm asking you, do the right thing, and don't close these offices down. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. All right, other elected officials, I know.
Judge.
Morning.
Good morning.
Judge Hattie. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
First off, I want to say thank you for allowing us to speak this morning. That means a lot, you know, because what, what's being done right now affects every one of us. On top of that, back in nineteen eighty-two, Commissioners' Court had an issue come before them, and it was a jail that sits right there across the street right now. They built that brand-new jail over there. Well, Commissioners' Court wanted to save money, and they, they told Sheriff Chuck Morris years ago, you know, back then, no, we're not gonna let you build, you know, build it structural-wise to where you can build up. Well, that Chambers County will never be that big. Well, had they, you know, had they not saved those few thousand dollars there, or a few hundred thousand, we wouldn't be in the pickle we're in now. You end up putting Band-Aids on that jail a few years afterwards. The Band-Aid keeps peeling off. I don't want to make the mistake for our future and have a Band-Aid by just, you know, doing away with JPs or constables, reducing it. That causes problems down the road. On top of that, you know, it was mentioned wasteful spending. Last year, I, I added on to my office, and I ended up purchasing furniture for four, you know, all my, the whole staff. I spent less than five thousand dollars. Less than a month later, Commissioners' Court approved over a hundred and nine thousand dollars for office furniture for another office. Now, you want to talk about wasteful spending, that, that's something you really and truly need to look at, that's wasteful spending. And my office being an asset and a liability, my budget, I've got a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget. To this date right now, we've collected two hundred ninety-eight thousand, just in fines. Last year during a pandemic, for the whole year, me and my office staff collected two hundred ninety-eight thousand. That all goes to general fund, so on and so forth. Now, the growth of Chambers County, I've got a few maps here. Kind of bring up, this is on the.
Yeah. Flip it, there you go. Flip that out.
Thank you. This is in two thousand two over, over in Beach City, let's see, no, this is, yeah, this is Beach City, Colbert. That's the way it looked in two thousand two. Now, same area, looking twenty eighteen, big difference, correct? Well, over here in the Anawak area, the same thing's going on. Are we gonna, you know, here's another one, two thousand two. Look at it. Now, you look at this one, two thousand eighteen, in which it's changed tremendously since twenty, two thousand eighteen. You know, if y'all want to look at these, I'll let you look at them.
You can leave it up. Just leave it up.
Oh, leave it up.
Somebody else may need it.
I might need it.
There you go, Brandon might need it.
There you go. But take a look at it, we're growing. Why start cutting now whenever, you know, the population's growing? You're taking away resources. My office sells stump stickers, there's not another JP office in the, in our county that sells them. My office does, because I look out for the people, and that's what I'm there for. You know, when elected as JP of precinct five, I wasn't just, you know, when I took that oath, I didn't say I was gonna uphold the laws and everything for precinct five, I said for Chambers County. And that's what I represent. You know, I'm a JP in the whole county. Yeah, it's for precinct five, but I'll go anywhere in the check, in, in Chambers County. Now, one last thing I want to leave you with is, and this kind of is a little different, but I'm sick and tired of the east side, west side thing. We as elected officials, we need to step up and lead the county as Chambers County, not east side or west side. You're either with Chambers County, or you're east side or west side. Let's, let's pull together as one and be Chambers County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, other elected officials, Judge Woody.
Morning. President, just peak precinct three.
Time's up already.
Wow.
You better take fast, man.
So, I want to address the fuzzy math that was put out in the cones. You know, the glaring one is, is Harris County has three hundred thousand citizens to one JP. Well, there was a whole lot of things missed there, and I have a paper there that passed around that we haven't looked at. Number sixty law enforcement agencies in Harris County, everything you can imagine. And there's some numbers here that boils down to, there's about ten thousand law enforcement officers in Harris County. Round numbers. There's four point seven million people in today's census. Well, that's about four hundred and seventy citizens per deputy, so they have a lot, a lot of deputies. Chambers County, done the math, the best I can do, because it's kind of hard to get information for municipal police departments and all that. There's about one officer per seven hundred citizens. Chambers County have to add a lot more officers to even equal what Harris County has. Now, to the, the judges, Harris County has sixteen municipal courts, I mean sixteen justices of the peace. They have a hundred and fourteen clerks that are listed as chief clerk or supervisors, I don't know, how many are below that? The whole book, I can imagine. The Harris County Municipal Courts have about sixty judges. How many clerks staff there? I don't know. The, you know, the Harris County JPs, they don't do inquest, we're, we're on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They don't do arraignments in jail. They have magistrates, I think it's about twenty-five magistrates that go do just jail work. A lot of the JPs in, in Harris County are specialized, their office does just civil, just criminal. They don't, they don't dabble into everything like we do, we have to know a little bit of everything. And there's a sheet there that shows you the duties of a justice of the peace. And on this sheet, really, there's only about one thing that creates dollars for Chambers County. Which I know Commissioners, when you go to school, that first thing they tell you, JP's there to make you money. Well, the first thing they tell us is, you're not there to make money for the county. Your job is to, to be fair and impartial and adjudicate what comes before you fairly. But traffic fines are about the only thing that create remedy in a JP court. All these other things you see are duties that we have to do, weren't known, because they come before us. In addition, I didn't add in here this other thirty-four municipalities that are in Harris County. Chambers County has a couple municipalities, Mont Belvieu and Baytown, which also have municipal police departments and municipal courts. You know, so it's, it's, it's very difficult to compare us to any other county really. There's not many counties with a bay sitting right in the middle of your county, you know? It's fifty-five miles from Beach City to Smith Point. It's fifty miles from the, the northeast side of Winnie, of Chambers County, to Smith Point. So, we have a, that was one of the reasons we have six JP, it's a lot of jurisdiction, and we are growing. I mean, right here in town, there's supposed to be another subdivision with five hundred homes going in it in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, any other elected officials?
Constable Nathan, good morning. Judge Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Morning.
I thank you all for the opportunity to address you this morning. I consider it a great honor to serve the people in my precinct. I worked hard to get here, and there was a lot of people that worked hard to help get me. I don't forget that. It was mentioned about saving taxpayer money and that our caseloads has been reviewed. And while there are not a lot of papers reflected, a lot of services reflected on that reporting software, we don't have, and when I say we, I mean, the constables do not have access to any type of law enforcement or otherwise reporting software that would support us doing reports to reflect those calls that we get from disgruntled neighbors, property disputes, trespassers, calls that the sheriff's office, or that they claim the sheriff's office won't take. They seek an answer from us, and we go out to try to help remedy that issue. My phone rings quite often during the day. I have one individual that I have to go sit down and spend time with him at his house, just to calm him down. He's a Vietnam veteran, and he's quite paranoid. He doesn't always get the satisfaction he needs or wants from sheriff's office. Talk about cutting costs. We, we, the county, we have a relatively new employee wellness center, we built a few years ago, been employed. It is not just used and utilized by our wellness people, our, our practitioner and nursing staff. It's my understanding that there have been some discussions started already to build a twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse here in mid-county, which is centrally located, as well as another facility on the west side of the county that would not be centrally located. Now, I believe that probably there could be enough office space utilized in this new warehouse to house the fire, fire marshal, safety, and health services that would allow our wellness center to be utilized for what it was intended for initially, just the whole health. That being said, what I would like to do is, is that, well, that would save millions of dollars if you could eliminate building one of those buildings. I urge you to reconsider shutting the precincts down. We do provide services for the people. Please let us continue to do our jobs and cut costs elsewhere.
Thank you, Constable. Any other elected officials? Morning.
Good morning, how are y'all?
Good morning.
Dennis Stigall, precinct one constable, been there twenty-nine years, I'm gonna be brief, I know I have a lot of things to do. I would urge you to reconsider this, keep these guys in place. You have a system that's working now. When I took, uh, when I took office twenty-nine years ago, I regularly served more papers than they did on the west side. Ways surpass me now. We know what kind of growth we've had over the last twenty-nine years, what we've had in the last five years. That's coming here to the middle of the county. You have a system in place that works now, you have people in place that know how to do their job and will serve the people well. I would urge you, please, keep them in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. Any other elected officials? Okay, let's get into citizens' comments. I have one of four, one point two, and that's AC Low, Mr. Low could come up there. Thanks, man, for record, and you may proceed.
I'm gonna be very brief too. Based on the population ratios I've seen and the savings that consolidation will bring, I'd be in favor of this proposal. But the real question to me should be based on caseload, and is there enough demand to require the current number of JPs and constables? If yes, the answer's apparent. If no, the answer requires a decision based on sound financial considerations. That's all I got to say. I mean, it seems simple to me, it's a business decision, it needs to be made. Not necessarily, you know, what's happened in the past. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Raymond Anders.
Morning, Ram. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Uh, I'm Raymond Anders, uh, I'm a citizen, homeowner, property owner of Chambers County. I'm also the fire chief of Oak Island Double Bayou Fire Department. I've seen a lot of changes over the years in this county, closing towns, and, you know, obviously, the west side of Chambers County is a, is a booming home building area. Population is growing leaps and bounds, which is great for the county. But the next horizon is, obviously, the east side of the county. And we're starting to see it now, new home communities being developed. So, I think we need to learn from the past and look for the future. I know we need to redistrict because of population, but the elimination of precincts, I think is going to be a bad problem for Chambers County for the future, for our children and grandchildren. And we need to consider that and ask this Commissioners' Court to consider that. Our future, not our past, and, and not problems that we see in other counties necessarily. You know, we have enough problems of our own in this county, and the constable and JPs in my district, which is Oak Island Double Bayou Smith Point area, numerous times, as a fire chief, I've called for sheriff's office assistance or deputy to come out to a scene. And, you know, we had to wait fifteen, twenty minutes to get a deputy, sometimes you're tied up on other areas of the county, different incident. But we don't have enough deputies to even respond in a timely manner when we have a resident or a property owner that's creating an incident on a, on a fire scene. You know, we have our constable and our JP in this area that we can call upon. They are law enforcement, they can help us, they support us. I've seen the crime rate in our areas and our communities increase. You know, as a fire department, we've ended up putting up cameras to help protect our fire stations because of the vandalism we've had in the local communities here. But then again, our sheriff's department said, well, it's a silhouette, it's not a positive facial identification, we can't do anything about it, case dropped. Nothing is done, so the criminal knows they got away with it. You know, we don't need this continued, we need the support of our JP and our constables in our communities. It may not be a very populated community, but these men represent the help we need in these communities. You know, one of my other concerns is, according to the state constitution, Article Five, Chapter Eighty-Six, Section Forty-two point zero one zero, the elimination of less populous precincts must be approved by the state secretary of the state. I hope this has been done. Boundary, boundary changes must be made during the month of March or April of each of the odd number of years. I understand this is a valid number of year, we're discussing it in October. When does this Commissioners' Court plan on making this change? The twenty-twenty-two is an even number of year. Are we eliminated from this process, or we're gonna be in violation of our own state constitution here?
Okay, Ryan, your time's up, but stay there, stay there, because you have another item, nineteen ten on agenda. And I'm gonna go in, while you're there, let's go ahead and take, you get three minutes on that additional item, sir.
Okay, again, I want to thank Commissioners' Court for increasing the fire department funding. It's very much needed, especially in, in our area, Oak Island Double Bayou, maintaining two fire departments, we maintain eleven apparatus. You know, everything is going up, you know, anything that says firing EMS because of the safety factor, the liability factor, the cost is much more than what the general public pays for some items. So, the increase of funding is, is very much appreciated. What I don't appreciate is a disrespect that's given to the fire departments when it comes to this funding agreement with the county. You know, we have a signed funding agreement with this county, and we try to abide by it, we try to police it, we try to maintain. We turn in a budget report every year to support this, what we spend our money on, how we spend it. Right now, we have a newer truck finance, it's not a new truck, but it's a newer truck for our communities. Very good truck, it's, supplies, it's supported us very well, but it's financed through a bank right now. And here, I hear a scuttlebutt, don't know what is gonna happen until I get the funding package. But we normally receive our funding in January, lump sum funding. We pay our initial bills, they're all set up as our budget report reflects. We pay these bills in January, then we know how much money we have to work with for the rest of the year, including our fundraisers. But if we go to quarterly funding, that's going to hurt the smaller departments, the less funded departments because of how we have our finances set up. I don't see a need or a reason to change this funding agreement. If you would like to change this funding agreement, give us enough respect and meet with the fire chiefs and discuss the situation before you go and make a decision to change the funding agreement. And we can explain to you how it can help us, how it wouldn't help us, how it would help the county, how it's going to hinder the county. So, please, and if you don't mind, if I give you a call, Mark Tice is my commissioner. As a fire chief, I would like you to respond to me.
Sure.
And I wouldn't have to come up here and bother everybody with this issue. I appreciate your time with this.
Thank you, Chief. That funding agreement?
I wrote the state initial January payment.
Okay, well, we'll get to on that item, I'd rather discuss it. All right, next speaker is Vicki Deere. All right, uh, next speaker is Vicki Dearman. Uh, against Deputy Constable. Good morning, Vicki.
Good morning. Forgive me if I ramble, but that's what I do best.
We got three minutes for rambles, so go ahead.
Um, with the current growth in east years, east Chambers County and west, it would seem that we need more law officers. Crime and drugs are growing daily, and to lose any seasoned law official is seems irresponsible to me. Crime is going up. You know what? I know what the criminals know, and they know where the least likely they are to get caught, and that's where they come. And based on the deputy numbers that Donnie Stanley presented earlier, I believe that the numbers that were presented by the constables were not fully addressed. You say eight constables? Well, there are eight, but some of them have five hundred people underneath them. Um, I would like to request that this amendment proposal be tabled until commissioners can spend more time talking with their constituents. And Mr. Tice, that's not the first response I've heard that you've not called. You've yet to call me back and several other people that I've talked to. I think that a call to your office deserves an answer. I think that due to the lack of public response, some people say that it's the lack of public response y'all ha- have received back on this issue is better said, it's the lack of public knowledge. I didn't find out about this till last week. I mean, I don't think the commissioners, I know you did an email. I didn't see that email. I mean, it was there, but I glanced through things and it was nothing that I deemed pertinent to me. I feel like our commissioner should have addressed people and tried to reach out more. I'm not discarding your, uh, email. Shame on me. I didn't read it, but guess how many other people didn't? This lack, this total response you're getting here shows that we care and we count, and I really do believe that due to the lack of presentation to the constituents that we deserve a better shot at listening to what you have to say and rebuttal back to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for the record. I love the shirt. All right, uh, next is Pastor Ronald Smith. Good morning, Pastor.
I want to thank God, thank you, Judge, Commissioners, and all the people that's here. I feel that we missed the point with the people. The people know the constables, know the JP's. They go to them when they got a problem. They know where they at. It's been going on many years. I was born and raised here. I went to school here, graduated from here. And pastor here, I think they're doing a great job. I don't hear no complaints. I just hear when I came up here from people from a different precinct, listening. We all got one thing in common. We all work different places, different precincts, but we work for Chambers County. That's the main thing. We need to get Chambers County going strong, and it's strong right now. And I feel that we just need to stay strong. We need to get our heads together and do something other than come and try to get rid of something. I, I feel this way. If it's not broken, it don't need to be fixed. It's already going good. I'm basing myself on the people. That's how I rely on the people. The people need a chance. They got a chance. They elected their official. Let's give them a chance. Everybody in here. Uh, I just, you know, love Chambers County. Because that's the way I was, uh, that's where I'm at, and that's where I was born. And if I can benefit, help out, and, you know, I'm against to get rid of somebody. Like they say, this place getting bigger. We got more people, got more crime. We need the people in place. They're doing a very great job. Everybody doing a great job. We just need to keep pushing and keep focused on what's the big objective. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Judge.
Amen. Hey, um, I, I didn't see you out there this morning. I would head you open court prayer. Would you go ahead and pray for us, ma'am?
Yes, I sure would.
Please.
Gracious God, we come before you and give you honor, give you praise. Father God, in the name of Jesus today, consecrate our hearts, consecrate our minds, that we can be on one accord. We thank you for every official that's here. Father God, you, you know them. You know where they're going. You know where they've been. We ask you to have mercy on everyone that's here, God, because I know you know all things and everything is going to be okay. We thank you right now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Don't try not to do that, okay? Hi, Rex Tonsi. Good morning, Rex.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, I'm here to support, uh, Constable Stanley and the JP, uh, what he does for our community is unbelievable, and I really enjoyed the history he shared on Herman Rivers. And, uh, I would add another one, Chester Humphries. It's a big name down there. He has a lot of family. But, uh, what Donnie does, uh, he, he knows the people. When there's disturbances, he knows, and that's, that's important. That's an asset. Uh, he helped me tremendously when doing county work, uh, and, and, uh, for him being down there and growing up there, I just think it's a big mistake to do away with that position. And, uh, it's just, uh, it means a lot to the people. I know the Channel View subdivision. We rely on him a lot. He comes there and, uh, he just, he's an asset, and to do away with that, and the other constables too, I just think it's a big mistake, and I just hope y'all uh, consider to keep him. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Good to see you. All right, Darlene Pogels. Pogels, good morning.
Good morning and, and thank you. I put Pogels on there instead of my first one, but because my husband is Mark Pogels, and he couldn't be here this morning because he works in Houston, but he's also the pastor of Community Christian Fellowship Church in Oak Island. And he asked me to come and speak on behalf of the church in his place. And representing Community Christian Fellowship Church, we want to explain what having Constable Stanley in our community does for us. When we have issues at the church, Mark calls, uh, on Constable Stanley, uh, to come and help with those issues. These are things that, um, perhaps a deputy to ca- could help with, but Donnie Stanley knows the people. Right now, there are four languages that are spoken in Double Bayou, Oak Island, and the areas leading up to that. That's, uh, Vietnamese, Khmer from the Cambodian people, Spanish and English. And I don't think Donnie speaks all those languages, but he has a way of communicating with the people and getting to know them. And I, I defy anybody to learn Khmer. But he can, he can communicate with those people. He also knows who are the problems and who are the helpers, who are the people that are going to come alongside us and help us with the problem citizens. When, uh, we have issues at the church, and I'll give you a good example that we have right now. There's someone living under our church. Donnie knows who that is, and he and Mark are working on that issue. We're, we're working on getting that resolved. And, uh, the, as far as the, um, the vandalism goes, Donnie can probably take a look at those, uh, those videos and look at not only the shadow, but the way the person walks and narrow down who's doing it. Uh, last night, I, I took a bad fall as I was coming in the door of our house, and I mean, I hit the floor hard and about gave Mark a heart attack. And when he jumped up, he says, what do you need? What do you need? Do you want me to call Donnie? I mean, not do you want me to call the EMTs, but it was like, Donnie was the first person that came to his mind because then Donnie would call the EMTs. They would all be there at the same, probably Donnie would be there first. But I said, no, just stop trying to pick me up off the floor. But here's the thing, uh, Donnie calls Mark too, and he'll say, Mark, we have an issue with a citizen in Oak Island. And this is, this could be a law enforcement issue. Oh.
We can wrap it up.
Okay, but the two of us together could probably work with this person and, and, and keep this, keep this out of the courts. In a day where we hear about, uh, law enforcement being defunded all across the United States, I would encourage you for us to not be one of those places that defunds law enforcement. And also, I would echo what, uh, Raymond said. We do not want to be in violation of our state constitution. I haven't done enough research to know how we avoid that, but I do know that the state constitution has a guideline for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Julia Barber. Against one point two. Good morning, Barbara.
Hi, good morning. Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak, and I, I do want to say thank you to my Commissioner Gore. Uh, he is very responsive when I call. I, I appreciate that. But I'm here today because I feel that this young lady really said it all. It's about the people. Are you listening to the people? Did anybody communicate to the people? I know I'm willing and able to support anyone that lets me know what's going on. Mr. Combs, I don't know if you generated any type of town hall meeting to get the word out. I think that's something we could all benefit from. You know, we, we have so many opportunities to do better. I'm about being better. I'm about being a visionary. I don't agree with cutting back. If you're a visionary, you're looking to the growth. We are growing. We're growing really fast. Okay? So how could you consider cutting back when they're, they're not making any more land that I know of? So they have to start moving more eastward. So all this stuff is coming towards Handcomber. I live in Handcomber. And there's a lot of changes that are going on locally. But, um, when you don't educate the people, the people cannot support what you're trying to do. So I feel that's why you have a lot of the response here, is we don't really know enough to even make a decision. So like you, I think you should table it. I think you should give Mr. Combs town hall opportunities to express his viewpoints. You know, but at the end of the day, you cannot compare Mount Bellevue to Handcomber. You know, number-wise, financial-wise, or any other thing. Okay? And it's obvious because most of these areas, I think we're talking about are unincorporated. I hear that word a lot. You're in the unincorporated area. So I don't want to be pulled into somewhere else based on if I'm not going to get any more benefits or any more services. What is that going to mean for us in the positive, not just to do an action? This gentleman said a business decision, not all, but just, not all business decisions are good decisions. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that was six. I have two others that would like to speak. Uh, our rules say that if you'd like to allow more to speak, you know, motion and second, you vote on it by majority. So it's a you have a second?
Sure.
And motion and second to allow the other two that signed up to speak. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, right, new discussion, some favor. Those, much carries, Miss Anne Newton. Did you see, maybe she's across the hall? What about Katie Smith? That's, uh, okay. We can see. We can get both of them over. Anne Newton, Katie Smith.
Anne Newton, that's not bizarre.
Okay, what about Kaylee Smith? Morning, Ken.
Good morning.
Morning.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
I wasn't technically signing up to speak.
Are you in? Well, would you like to, or?
I'll just very quickly, thank you for letting me address the court today. So I am a resident. I've lived in the county since two thousand nine, and I consider Chambers County home. I've lived in Smith Point since two thousand sixteen. And I love, I love my community. It's a great community, and I would urge the commissioners to consider at least taking no action today or tabling this item until further information and research can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all. I had signed up for the, for that item. You know, I'll start out by saying that, uh, we've addressed this.
Judge, we did have one more. It's a written comment, but he's here today.
Who's that? Mr. Snack did. Come on. Okay, it's in. Did I miss anybody else? Sorry, Russ.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Rusty Snack, uh, and, uh, uh, I, I implore the, uh, county commissioners to perform a complete review and to consider a reduction of the JP constable, uh, precincts by either one or two of the six that currently exist in, in the county. All of the data that I've reviewed in, in comparing the ratios of counties' populations and the responsibilities indicates that, uh, we have, uh, excess capacity. You have the data, uh, you have the, the, the hard data on cases that are filed, I believe, quarterly with the state of Texas from each of, uh, of these precincts. And I think the Commissioner's Court needs to take a, a really good, uh, look at that information. The, the fact is that our JP and constable responsibilities are very important to the operation of, uh, of Chambers County. We are very fortunate to have some very good elected officials. Donnie Stanley, I, I know is excellent. All of them are excellent, but Donnie Stanley is a reason. I ran for county commissioner in the first place because of the job that he was doing and how he was treated by some, uh, other elected officials. The, uh, caseloads, though, vary greatly between the six precincts. Uh, and, uh, the commissioners, uh, should consider combining those, those precincts. The commissioners don't decide who gets the job and who doesn't. That's up to the voters to decide who's going to be their, their constable or their JP. And so that's not up to, uh, the court to make that determination. You know that, but I think it's important for everybody here to hear that, that you don't make that decision. Uh, I estimate that the current tax dollars that are currently, uh, being spent, in my opinion, would, opinion would be much better utilized, uh, if it was provided with full-time law enforcement. Uh, in other words, if you, you change some of these dollars over to the sheriff's department so that we have full-time law enforcement, not just within a precinct, but county-wide, uh, I, I think that makes, uh, can make a big difference for everyone in the county. Our elected officials are elected to serve us, the residents. It should be every elected official's, uh, primary duty to ensure that our tax dollars are used wisely. I agree you cannot compare Chambers County to Harris County. Those comparisons are, are absurd to make those types of comparisons. Chambers County does have a number of municipal courts, including the city of Baytown, including Mount Bellevue. Actually, many of you may not know, Beach City has a municipal court established. It's just not used a lot because there's not a lot of need for it. Old River Winfrey, Anawak, there, there are others. So don't compare it to Harris County, but you can look at the fifty-plus counties that have populations between thirty thousand and sixty thousand people. Chambers County falls right in the middle of that. And, and look at that comparison and make comparisons to those. With that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just for the record, we had eleven other, uh, comments coming. And just for the record, we had 11 other comments come in online. Uh, all, um, against one point two. Uh, anybody else sign up that we missed? My time's up. Yeah. Um, all right, so we, we've addressed this. I know in 2010, I think in 2020, I mean, 2000 also. Um, it's, it, every time since I've been on the court, when the census comes up, um, census comes up, redistricting, and you know, we do have to redistrict because each commissioner, uh, has to have the same, basically the same number of voters in his precinct. So his vote weighs, Billy's vote weighs the same as Jimmy's vote. So we do have, we were forced to redistrict. Uh, and the last few times we have, last couple of times since I've been on the court, we've also looked at, um, the JP and constable precincts. You know, I came to the conclusion 2010 that, you know, for it, for what it costs county, I feel like um, the folks these constables, JP serve, uh, they will get their money's worth. And I, you know, I stand by that. And I'll, you know, I'll support whatever the voter this score is, uh, but I do stand by that. And I do truly feel like we get, you folks get your money's worth. All right, Commissioner, your item, I'll let you address.
Yeah, Judge, I asked for this, ma'am, I asked for a job too.
You ran hard.
There you go. Might as well. No, uh, I did, uh, this is something that precedes me. It's been discussed as long as I've been talking to different commissioners, including one past commissioner who now will not admit in public that he's been proven this long, but trust me, it's there. It's just one of those things that whole fault needed to be brought forth to people. And I did not keep it a secret. I have since, you know, over three weeks now, I've had it posted on my Facebook page. I asked for comments and getting stuff back because I wanted it to be out, I wanted to hear from people. And yes, I am looking at numbers. And, uh, I did put something on my Facebook page that had Harris County population on it. But one of the first comments I got back is you should not compare Harris County to, uh, Chambers County. So the numbers that I'm going to share with y'all today, I, I did not include Harris County anymore. Only in that initial little population thing and looking at it. After hearing all the comments, I realized it is very personal to people. It, it, you know, I get it, it, it is, and I, you can't separate that, I wish that could. But I think that's a fine example as to why the government cannot cut spending anywhere. Everybody wants to cut spending, but they want to do it in other places. And how do you, how, how do you separate that? You know, I don't know. I, I, I've heard a whole lot of people talking, you know, we need to cut spending, we need to cut spending. But let me tell you how we need to cut it. So I, I want to show up, go over some stuff I've been looking at, and if you could put it on the screen. Y'all see that? Blow it up. Yeah. This is the first little graph that I'd actually made when, uh, before I made the Facebook page. And it just compared the populations. And I listed all of these populations, you know, in, in that little note, I didn't go into caseload or anything. And, uh, you know, the first one off the bat that, uh, people have compared it to today is Harris County with the 16 JPs and a population of, uh, 4.8 billion dollars, 4.8 million people roughly. And, but then you get down to Galveston County. Now, given Galveston County at 292, they have four currently. They, before Ike, they actually had eight. And then after Ike, you know, came down and their population went away. Uh, they were desperate, they were bleeding, and, and they cut it down to four. And so they're operating right now with, with four, and, uh, they've got, uh, roughly 17 or 73,000 people per JP. And these are just number comparison. Liberty County has got six. And, uh, with a population of 15, uh, and 15,500 per JP. And of course, that'd be JP constable office, it doesn't take into account any constable deputies that might be there. Jefferson County is a little unique. Jefferson County's got eight precincts, two of them are inactive. Their precinct one is actually got a JP place one and JP place two, but they've only got six constables or constable offices. So that gives them, I, I've used the number right there, seven because that represents the number of JPs that they have. And then if you look, then Chambers County's got roughly 46,500 people. And with six, uh, JP constable office precincts, that gives us seven, 7,750 people per, uh, per office. And, uh, if we were to reduce to five, it would be 9,300. And if it reduced to four, it'd be 11,600. Then if you split that up a little bit more and, uh, you look at the west side currently, western river, it's got 33,500 people, it's got two JP constable precincts, and with 16,750, which is slightly above the lowest one up above, which would be Liberty County. But then if you look at the east side, where it sits right now, you got a population ratio of 32,000, uh, 3,250 per, uh, JP constable precinct. And the other two would just give you, you know, the, uh, numbers, what it would be if it were reduced to three or to two. All right, turn the page. This is the case. Yeah. And you might want to move the, your little screen up there. Yeah, get it out of the way. Blow that, blow that up a little bit so they can see. Uh, yeah, we, we, we can do half months, can you slide over? So this is, uh, the fines and the cases, caseload. And this was actually taken out of Chambers County data, big government state. So this is our, uh, our JP, uh, offices that we have, and this is JP caseload. And I'm not concentrating on fines, I know people have brought that up. But quite frankly, I have not really looked at, at that number. And I think the fines and the stuff are going to be there regardless of how many numbers it's going to be handled by. That number should, shouldn't really, shouldn't really vary. But if you'll look at it, and, and I think as one of the speakers alluded, it's not very well balanced. You know, if you, if you look, uh, you know, we go from the caseloads, a high, uh, what's the high, there are 1,600 uh, down to 31 between the different JP offices. And then if you'll just kind of move over to the highlighted one in the top, and this is on the nine months. And so this is looking at it in the east side currently, as it is, you got 906 uh, cases per JP compared to the west side at 1,238. And then if you scroll on over a little bit, if there were three JPs on the east county divided up, that caseload would be pretty well balanced with what the JPs are seeing on the, uh, on the west side of the river. And then if we cut it to, uh, total four, then you can see that the caseload for the, uh, two JPs that would be remaining on the east side would actually be heavier than what you would have for the two JPs on the, uh, west side of the river. And that diagram below it, it is the same numbers, just took mathematically and carried it out using that same ratio to what it would look like in, in one year. So we're going to go to the next page. Now, this one is a little bit more complicated. And this came back from the state. And this run, these, these numbers run from, uh, August the 31st of, no, excuse me, September 1 of 19 through uh, August 31 of, uh, 20. And I'm not good at pulling up this data. That was the only one I could get with all of the data that had been submitted to the state to really get a full year's worth. But what I wanted to show you here is this just compares what kind of load, and we'll, we'll just concentrate on totals and, and not look at the civil and the criminals. So if you will look at the far right in the, uh, average number, first of all, for Chambers County, a total for six precincts, we've got added cases and disposed cases. Uh, all of our precincts reporting together, we had just under 8,500 cases added and 6,300 or almost 6,400 disposed. And then you go down and you divide that, uh, per precinct. And this is assuming everybody was equal, just on average, it would be about 1,400 added and about 1,066 disposed. And so in, in that same number in Galveston County, they're running about almost three times as many because they've only got the four JPs offices. And then if you go down to Jefferson County, they're running about roughly one and a half times if you, that, if you average them together. And then you go down to Liberty County, Liberty County is running about 20% more on, uh, on caseloads. All right, go ahead and turn the page. And shrink that, okay, so this is looking at, uh, just the papers served because cost, cost, our, um, statutory, the only thing that's required by constables by law is they have to serve as a bailiff for their court, and they have to serve papers. The other stuff, not saying they don't do it, but I'm saying, you know, they don't have to do it. So I'm looking at the only thing that's really required or that was reported. And these are the actual papers served. And, uh, the same thing, this one, January 1 through September 30th. So as you can see, if you look at the average a week, you know, two of them are serving on average less than one paper a, a week. Now, when I put my information out on my page, I had talked to the judge before I did. And he told me the exact same thing that he just told y'all. He said that I know the numbers don't support it, but I feel like the good that they do in the community outweighs it and makes it worth the taxpayer. So that's the question that I asked. And that's what started this conversation, and that's why I think people are here today. I think they want to answer that question. I think they're very concerned about what we're trying to do. So that's where that number came from, and so we're, we're just looking at the caseloads here. Now, go ahead to the next page. I know Gloria, you said that, I said $700,000 would be saved the other day. The actual cost in salary and benefits is going to be close to about $500,000. Other costs such as office and overhead, I, I don't anticipate that any clerks or anything, I'm at workload there. Everybody knows the clerks do the work in the, uh, in the offices and the JPs, you know, getting that done. So if you, uh, if you look at, if we cut it down to four JPs, we would have a savings in just salary and benefits of roughly $500,000 a year. If we cut it down to five total, it would be a savings of about $230,000 a year on salary and benefits. And I do not know what the other, other numbers would be, but it could be quite a bit. I'll let the other representative court weigh in.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, anything?
I would ask if Ms. Hawthorne can kind of explain the transition process? If we do reduce the number of JPs and constables? How that would take place and, and the timeframe?
I mean, as far as election.
So, uh, Commissioner, the way I understand it is that everyone will serve out their term. The constables were all just elected and took office on January the 1st, 2021. The JPs will be up for election in 2022 and will start their terms on January 1 of 2023. So the way I understand it is that nobody is put out of office, so to speak, because of this redistricting process. The, they were elected for a four-year term and they will fill the four-year term.
Answer your question.
Yes, sir.
All right, other questions, comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I believe, just like last board, we tabled the percentages for the Justice Center. And I believe Commissioner Combs and Hammond worked with them to work out a deal, although we save quite a bit of money there. In areas, we can cut other areas instead of this. And I do believe as well as the judge, the residents within the community and what these do for our community is what we do. We got a $65,000 budget. This is not a big portion of that budget. I just, I just believe that as well as the growth is coming, as well as everything else, I mean, we really need to look at it. Not be up for pulling it and just doing away with it. And that's up to the court. I don't, I don't feel it's a good decision for the taxpayers. We're supposed to be stewards of the taxpayer fund, which we are. And just like, um, Constable Moon mentioned earlier, by the, the warehouse over here and the, the tax office, commissioner office and others on the west side. We went to 10,000 square foot on that. I know I voted to have a design done, but I mean, as well as Commissioner Combs, we both wanted to see a plan laid out for the county to how we're going to proceed forward. And I know that we're working with, uh, a company to give a 10-year plan, whatever, is it there, the 10-year plan, something like that for us, we're in financial I believe, if we build this over here, the 25,000 square foot warehouse, which we need, we put all offices in there, we can reduce that 10,000 square foot building over on the west side back to the 2,500 square foot, same sort of being there. So I mean, just looking down the road, we can save money elsewhere to, to make this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm good, Your Honor. Uh, I was going to get Heather to explain that, but she did so eloquently. Thank you, Heather. Good judge.
All right.
Yeah, you know, uh, just to add, I have heard a lot of comments, uh, both for and against. I will say that one thing, a couple of things I have not heard, you know, and one, I have not heard any negative comments or anybody from my precinct or my constituents arguing against it. They've all been in favor of it. If there's anybody against it, they have not came to me. You know, everything I've heard, and, and I get it, I know you can't take the personal out of it. And I agree with you, Commissioner, we do need to look at cutting those costs. And as long as I'm on this court, I'll keep, continue working with you to do that. Thank you. But I don't think it's right to say we're going to cut costs in one area and intentionally just turn her back on another area.
Anybody else? I think most.
I'll move that we reduce the, uh, total number of precincts in Chambers County to five. And I'd like to further that, Judge, to say that the savings of it, I'd like for
Let me, let me get a second.
Second.
I got most of my, Commissioner Combs.
Went through with my motion, sir.
Oh, you are.
That was part of my
Sorry, go ahead, finish your motion.
Okay, I moved that we reduce the total number of JP constable precincts to five, and that we take the savings from that and we put it, keep it into law enforcement, whether it's in the, uh, added, uh, sheriff deputies or, uh, constable deputies. But full-time patrol.
Now, are you thinking?
Out there.
Be second.
I will second that.
I got motion second. Other discussion, go ahead.
I mean, if we're doing that, we're, we're receiving a tax refund. If we go ahead and allocate that to more personnel. That's my, that's my, that's my comment on that. Okay, because the arguments that I have heard have been Okay, because the arguments that I have heard have been in the enforcement side, not in the JP side. I haven't heard any of those arguments. And this would put more boots on the ground for patrol.
All right, other comments? If you're none in favor.
All right.
Close. Most carries thirty-one.
Okay, Judge.
Yes, sir.
You say reducing it by one, who you reduce?
You don't reduce it by anyone. You redraw the lines.
Yeah, but you have to.
Wait, 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 okay.
You have to, you have to absorb an area. So one of these JP areas have to be absorbed. So yes, you have to decide which one you're you're doing away with.
Right there.
This is correct.
It would absorb if it's.
You have to absorb one of them into another area. You have to take this middle area and make it into two. So yes, you have to decide now who you're doing away with.
We have to have that for our attorney for redistricting.
You draw the line, it may not be straight down any one of us.
It will, though.
You know, I heard, Commissioner, you got to absorb one into another. So.
We can't just say, because you have to draw lines for these candidates to sign up and run in. So we need to make a decision. The decision has to be made now. You, I mean, you might have to look in the face and say, hey, I'm doing away with your job. That's what we just what we got to do.
No, we, let me ask Heather. I thought we redraw the lines and then wherever precinct, whoever lives in that precinct when it comes time to run can run again.
That's if you reduce it to two. If you reduce, if you if you reduced, if you reduce to four instead of five, that would work. Since you reduced to five, that just not.
If you reduce to four, it would be the Anawax School District would be one precinct. And then another precinct on this other river is East Chambers. So you reduce it to five, yes, there's some.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so I believe Commissioner Combs is correct that that the council is waiting to find out on how many. And once there is the determination of how many, then the lines get drawn and whoever lives in what precinct runs for what office. It's not, so if if we take back to our our total population and we're going to divide it now by five JP precincts and constable precincts, then the lines are drawn to incorporate that to instead of eleven thousand per commissioner, it'll now be thirteen thousand or whatever, no, I'm sorry, lower, nine thousand per JP precinct.
Well, yeah, but there's not an equal number of JP of of population in JP precincts. So, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Gore. One of these precincts, you got precinct two. One of them, either the one in the north or one in the south is going to be incorporated into precinct two. So I think that decision has to be made, which one are you going to incorporate so they will run for precinct two.
I will, I would suggest that we get our legal counsel on the phone before you start making that determination. Because I think Commissioner Combs is correct on you redraw the lines and.
So you're going to Allison Bass, which is who would redraw our lines. Okay, so you're going to allow them to make the decision on which constable JP you're doing away with.
No, that's our decision.
No, that's your decision.
That's what I said, it needs to be made.
I agree. I think you make that decision, you made your motion, you seconded, you make that decision. Then we turn it over to the attorney and say, okay, here's what we did.
Here's.
Now, is there something else? I mean, as soon as we get through this, or we can turn it over to him now and say.
That's not, I mean, I I talked to Bob Bass, that's not how I I agree with Heather. That's not how I get it.
Judge, can we take a break? You get him on the phone.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to take a break anyway. And then we voted on it now, so it's, we can tell them what we done and then we can ask you, do we need to come back in and correct it? Okay, with that, we will take a well, I'll take it back. We're going to have a quick break, yeah. I do have a public hearing that I actually need to go to because I know we have to focus here on that. So let's do that before before we take a break. Going down to Road Bridge, three point one, public hearing at ten AM, starting right away. Sale abandonment of a part of Shady Glen Drive in Oak Island. And at ten fifty-one AM, we will recess at a regular session of Commissioners' Court. Going to the public hearing, Mr. David Day, you'll come up, sorry. At a public participation form. You have three minutes. I won't start it until you actually get to the podium. It's taking me to get there.
Thank you.
Uh, you may proceed, sir.
My name is David Day. I live on Poncho Street. I am a registered engineer in the state of Texas. We don't necessarily oppose the abandonment of the right-of-way Shady Glen, but we have some concerns. All of the residents on Poncho Street are served by a forced main sewer line that runs down Shady Glen and runs under the canal. And the sewer line runs right through the middle of the property that the county is going to sell to this individual. Now, when on Poncho Street, when we ran a sewer line down Poncho, because Trinity Bay never put it in way back when, we got well surveyors to plat the sewer easement and that protects it from any construction or anything. We have a a real concern that the new owner would go on the property with a backhoe, strike the line, which is a plastic line, and then raw sewage is pumped into Galveston Bay. And I haven't seen the plant of the area in question, but but I recall how that line was installed and Trinity Bay just came out there and installed it. There were no, to the best of my knowledge, no plants or any civil engineering work done to protect that land in as much as they thought it was a street right-of-way and they didn't have to. Furthermore, on on each side of the property to be abandoned on Shady Glen, there are two large ditches draining down to the canal. And and I, we question if the the easement for these two ditches is also protected. And finally, that area is used for kayakers to come and park and picnic and and they launch kayak kayaks on that part of Shady Glen. So we we just request that the county engineer review all of this, just like we did with Bobby Hall years ago when we ran the sewer line down Poncho and protect our sewer rights for the people on Poncho Lane. And so thank you. That's all the time I want to take.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Any other comments, the public, would you give with the county engineer and tell them what you told us? Or leave us.
The county doesn't have an engineer.
No, we have a county engineer.
Okay.
Okay, we we have to. You want to leave that with me? We'll make copies and and give it to him. Just bring it back here and they'll take.
Well, this, I'll only have the sewer line running down Poncho Lane.
Whatever you have that you think would assist the county engineer, bring it back here and we'll make copies.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we will. Yeah, he's not here for that public hearing now. So now the comments of public hearing will turn out of it, go back to the regular session of Commissioners' Court, fifty-six AM. There's no item to vote on concerning the abandonment, so Corey will have to put it on the next court for action. We have one of the citizens comment. Let's go ahead and take him before we get through. Gloria Romer, one point five. Sure. All right, with that, ten fifty-seven AM, we will take a fifteen-minute recess. All right, Thomas County Commissioner Court. Thomas County Commissioner Coquelin, after recess, it's ten sixteen AM. You can kind of tell them we're backing up. Oh, thank you, dear. Eleven sixteen AM. Point it out, our stain treasure. Glad somebody paid attention. Anybody else out there, too? All right, I'm busy with our redistricting attorney. During the break, and I feel like we need to clarify the motion that was made. So this time we we passed the motion thirty-one to redistrict from four, five, from six to five. Commissioner, I'll entertain another motion, rescinding motion. Have you like clarified or we'll leave it as is and work that way. But I think we really, to be to be able to move on with this thing, I do the sign-ups for JP's and JP's. We need clarification.
All right, Judge, in that case, I will move that we combine two in precincts two and three.
Okay, so the motion is to combine JP precincts two and three along with the constable precinct, JP and constable precincts two and three. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I know, second. I got most of my Commissioner Combs, Deb's second.
Yeah, I'm trying to see something. I'll second that.
First my Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Hammond. And you have the precincts here in front of you, Lauren printing them. Whatever color green that is, blue-green is precinct two. We combine combine with the pink. I brace precinct three, excuse me, combined with the pink precinct two.
May I ask Heather a question?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask Heather a question?
You can ask her if you want to.
Does Heather do the different population or land mass?
Neither.
It it's not. It's based on, the question is, how are the JP precincts decided? And it's based on Commissioners' Court drawing of the precincts. So we, if if the motion is to combine JP Commissioner Precinct Two with JP Commissioner, JP Commissioner, George Heather, JP Constable Two and JP Constable Three.
And that's the most.
Then the election boxes of of nine and three would be combined with
I I get that.
Six.
But I mean, if you still look up our precinct five, that's small. I would rather it be more equal. That's a larger area.
Commissioner, you can draw it however you'd like. Yeah, I mean, it's that that the contiguous election precincts are what's important in the big, in the redistricting process by by statute. But I mean, they can't, you can't have an island out here. You have to have contiguous election precincts.
So right now, most of them combine two or three. All right, any other discussion, questions? If you're none in favor.
All right.
Close. Most carries three one.
But when do we have to have, we have, I mean, the late in silence or thirteen, Brian? So we have to have these drawn and turned in by next court, Judge?
We will have a, I'm sorry, Judge, I'm answering for you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, thank you. Go ahead.
And we will have a special call Commissioners' Court to review all the lines. We'll have a public hearing and then you'll adopt them, yes, in on the November ninth. And then four days later, signups begin.
Okay. We voted on that. We're moving on to one point five. Just consider possible action on information provided by the retained counsel regarding twenty twenty. Census data initial assessment of Chambers County political boundaries.
Representation from Marson.
Sir, sir, I'm gonna hold you in contact. All right, one point five. Start over again. Discuss and consider a possible action on information provided by retained counsel regarding twenty twenty census data. Initial assessment of Chambers County political boundaries, including order to redistrict and setting a special call Commissioners' Court meeting to consider plan or plans for redistricting of county political founders. Lauren, we need to let Mr. Bob Bass know what we did because that's going to affect the public hearing date that we talked about yesterday. All right, so what our finding is. Chief, did you hear that boy out of order that was sitting on front row?
I didn't hear what he said.
Yeah. He shouldn't say anything. We just warned him if he's still out there. You know, I'm talking about a young kid with a beard. Thank you. On this day, the twenty-sixth day of October, twenty twenty-one, Commissioners' Court of Chambers County met regular session, having posted notice that hearing complies with chapter five five one of the government code. Commissioners' Court of Chambers County has previously retained the firm Allison Bass and McGee of Austin to conduct an initial assessment of existing political boundaries in Chambers County. I'm not going to read the rest of it, but it's there. Therefore, Judge, decreed that Commissioners' Court of Chambers County, Texas specifies that it has a legal duty to redistrict. The public interest will be served by redrawing the existing political boundaries of Chambers County in such a manner as to comply with applicable state and federal law. Commissioners' Court hereby enters the following findings of fact and law. Chambers County has a total maximum deviation as found in this order of forty-eight point nine four percent. Any total maximum deviation in excess of ten percent is presumptively unconstitutional under federal law. Chambers County acted by and through its Commissioners' Court. Chambers County acted by through its Commissioner's Court, hereby resolved to immediately undertake such necessary and appropriate action to accomplish redistricting of existing Commissioner's Court precincts in any incidental modification of existing consolidation, consolidated or newly created election precincts necessary to accomplish such redistricting. Number four, the Commissioner's Court shall ensure convenient open meetings. Dearly posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, take up and consider one or more alternative plans for the legal redistricting of Chambers County. After due consideration of one or more alternative plans, Chambers County shall adopt a plan deemed to satisfy legal requirements and which best suits the legitimate governmental needs of Chambers County. Adopted redistricting plan will address political boundaries of the Commissioner's Court. Just as a piece, an election precincts in Chambers County shall remain effective to alter or amend by subsequent order of the Commissioner's Court. So we're gonna be what, voting on, first need to hear from this Romer. Come on up, ma'am.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, before I make a comment, I have a question. Is is the district lines that are out on the maps outside that say proposal A, is that what y'all have already voted on? Or you're voting on that today?
We are voting on what I just read, it's. Those are just proposed by our attorneys, we're voting on what I just read.
Okay, so there is no proposal B per se. I I guess my, I'm I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, so all of that being said that he just read is acknowledgement that we are out of compliance because of our growth, so that our our Commissioner's Court precincts are forty eight percent out of compliance. So this order is is an acknowledgement that we are out of compliance, that we plan to redistrict, and that will be done, those maps and boundaries will be decided in an open meeting to address not only the Commissioner's precincts, the justice of the peace precincts, but also election precincts. As stated back in April, we have two election precincts that are out of compliance as well. So no, ma'am, that is one proposal, there there will be another proposal that will be held in an open meetings and then a public hearing, so that all they're adopting is this order today to say, we recognize we're out of compliance.
Okay, all right, I I don't have anything to comment on, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I need a motion to approve the order for redistricting. First my commissioner tasks, second by Mr. Gore, any questions? It's awesome, thank you for explaining that so well, and thank you for working with, I know you and Lauren and several others have worked hard to get us where we are with this. With that, those in favor? Oppose, most securities. BJ, have you been waiting patiently? All right, let's go to economic development and tourism, one five point one, discuss consider project ABC, chemical incentive request, good morning, sir.
Morning Judge, Commissioners. Over the last several years, there've been several significant petrochemical projects that have been conducting due diligence, going back to twenty eighteen, some in twenty seventeen. Some projects have been stunted by the impact of the COVID and have reengaged considerably, this is one of those projects. Foundation's been working with this particular site selection firm for a multinational firm that's planning to construct a significant chemical production facility along the Gulf Coast. Chambers County's emerged as a finalist location. Harris County was a competing location, Texas City was currently right now Jefferson County and Liberty County, part of competing counties in Texas. State Louisiana has two other sites as well. The capital investment for this particular project is five hundred fifty to six hundred fifty million dollars with a potential permanent jobs of two hundred. They hope to make a determination by years in or Q one of twenty twenty two and estimate startup at twenty twenty four. Has it been the practice here recently, with we're presenting incentive recommendation or consideration to provide some guidance to the site selection consultants and the the multinational firm so that they can further, you know, close the funnel, if you will, to make a determination of Chambers County is going to continue to be a competing site. And so what's recommended to you, obviously, in the first page, it's showing the economic impact of a hundred full-time jobs that are cited on an attachment, there's a spreadsheet that lists the types of jobs that are associated with this, is very consistent with the petrochemical facility, that the constituent makeup of two hundred jobs, but we've run a profile on a hundred full-time jobs that focus on operations only, operators, maintenance, lab technicians and the like. And so the economic impact, annual economy impact, the Chambers County of a hundred employees is noted. You've got the direct, indirect and induced effects totaling three hundred sixty nine million, five hundred fifty two thousand dollars. So consistent with projects similar that have been put before the court for consideration, the recommendations that the court consider entertaining and entering to a a tax abatement agreement or a development agreement that would provide for sixty percent abatement of taxes over time, consistent with the values that would be stipulated in a partnering chapter three thirteen application, because that's going to be the the primary consent that's going to be proposed. So what's before put before the court is a consideration that upon further determination, if in fact Chambers County is selected as a finalist site, that the court could consider entering into a ten-year abatement agreement for at sixty percent, based upon the chapter three thirteen valuation. Thanks, sir, question.
BJ, would this be located in Cedarport?
Yes.
I want to make it very clear that before I will agree to any abatement for a chemical plant there, we need to finalize our green belt agreement. We've worked on it very hard and we're almost there, but I would be in favor of this once that is in place.
When do you need this?
They're gonna report back today or this week, I'm sorry, I missed what Commissioner was.
I I said that we, you know, I would support it once we have finalized an agreement with TGS on our green belt.
Green.
Right. And he also said they're very close to finalizing that, correct?
We are, we just haven't gotten it over the finish line, we need to get it there.
Is there an inventory in this chemical company that we need to look at also, Commissioner?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's hard to determine, Commissioner, what the inventory would be.
Yeah, I mean.
Am I right?
That's correct.
Yeah, inventories change, as we well know.
For chemical plants in particular, right?
Yeah. All right, I want to turn the motion.
I'll make a motion that it be approved contingent upon finalizing a green belt agreement with the developers of Cedarport.
I'll second that.
First my commissioner comes, second by Mr. Hammond, any other discussion? Those in favor? Oppose, most securities, five point two, discuss considering the Argo, the Army.
Very good, Judge.
Realty LLC, food time tax abatement application, I should have practiced that a little bit.
Thank you, Judge, you may recall on the twenty eighth of September, a project, a competitive project concept was presented to the court. Codename Project Futon, this is a distribution center e-commerce fulfillment project. At the time, they're currently sites that were competing in Chambers and Harris County. The conditional approval was cited and approved by court based upon stipulating certain inventory levels and the like. They have indicated that they're very interested, as noted in the cover letter in the AmeriPort Business Park, to establish and build a one million square foot distribution facility. They've noted that their inventory levels, if in fact the site is chosen and an agreement would be entered into with Chambers County, that the starting, I guess, the annual inventory every rendering in January would be between three and five million, ramping up to ten million dollars. And so the applicant has moved forward, or the prospect has moved forward, but actually presenting a formal application, Yoragi Realty LLC, which does business as Sapa Vea, which is Persian rugs, home furnishings and like. This is a third furniture related project that is looking at citing and in Chambers County. And so they're requesting some consideration of their application to further refine their site selection prospect, process. In the application, they've noted that the competing location, the primary competing location is the Empire West Development in Brookshire. And they're working with other consultants to make that determination between Brookshire and Chambers County. So the application is presented for approval as an indication of commitment to the conditional incentive abatement that was approved by court with stipulation that they would agree to minimum inventory levels as part of the agreement.
So we know what the minimum inventory are now?
As they're saying, it's to start out, three to five million dollars every January, ramping up to ten million.
Yeah, but over one time, say three million in the next year?
Yes, and in the language that we're going to be proposing for the court consideration, because there are a number of these agreements that are being refined, is to have a range, because there we have to take into consideration, there's going to be variation, right? So right now, the approval of the Hunt Southwest Amendment that the court approved some few weeks ago, consideration is a plus or minus thirty percent, meaning that the conceptually, the inventory stipulated would be X plus thirty percent.
So we'll know how to budget.
That is correct.
Budget that minimum inventory.
Absolutely.
And then it could be more than that.
Could be more than that.
All right.
So this is one that we had talked about.
Yes, Project Futon, and then now they've actually made a formal application as the LLC.
That's what threw me. And one other thing I want to point out, and it's not really got to do with you, but hopefully Cory's listening. If you will, look at their site plan, this AmeriPort site kind of snuck in on us, and they have not met our requirements for our green belt process. So my motion on this one would be the same thing, is that we will support it contingent upon them meeting our green belt, meeting and exceeding our green belt requirements.
First by Commissioner Gomes, second by Mr. Task. Questions? Those in favor? Oppose, most securities, BJ, thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. All right, let's go back to the top, one point one, on a department update, your best, you have brief update, very brief.
Morning.
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 It's been a little bit. So. I'm gonna just kind of get a brief. Yeah. Just a brief kind of update on COVID nineteen and our current response activities in the county. We are fingers crossed, we are finally seeing the other side of this last wave. And I'm gonna give y'all some statistics on those as well, as what we've kind of endured over the past year. So currently total, from the beginning of the pandemic, Chambers County has reported eight thousand seven hundred eighty one positive cases. We currently only have forty eight active cases, and for us, this is a huge win, because y'all remember, we had over three to four with five hundred active cases at one point, just, you know, six weeks ago. We've recorded ninety seven deaths, and I'll give you some statistics on those as well. Just to give you a little bit of an idea about the number of cases that has happened during the last wave. And August, we had five hundred and new, five hundred and ninety five new cases in a three-week period, averaging forty two a day. And we had a thirty eight percent positivity rate. In September, during a three-week period, and I'm sorry, this is just a two-week period, I'm I'm doing this in two-week increments. In September, during the same two-week time period, and we had five hundred and seventeen new cases in a two-week period, averaging thirty seven a day with a twenty eight percent positivity rate, so it had dropped from August into September. And then currently, during this two-week period, we have sixty two new cases in the past two weeks, averaging four new cases a day with our current positivity rate of eleven point four percent. And I didn't even look back and see when the last time we've had eleven point four. I honestly don't even think we had an eleven point four positivity rate in the spring, between the January brush and then this latest one. So this is the lowest one, but I can go back and get those numbers for you. Unfortunately, we've also had many deaths in the county, each one is not just a number for the case, it's actually a person to us. We had thirty one deaths in the year twenty twenty, we've had sixty eight deaths in twenty twenty one, and forty of those occurred during this last wave, starting mid-July into her, and that represents a hundred and forty three percent increase in deaths just from July until now. So where are we? As far as vaccinations and those who, people always ask us about vaccinations, and those people who have passed away. Of those forty new ones that passed away just since July, thirty three of them were not vaccinated, one was partially vaccinated and six were fully vaccinated. Our current immunization rates in Chambers County have also increased since the July, they were at thirty eight percent currently, they're fifty fifty two percent, which are extremely excited about, we're working hard on that. And that represents about eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty six of our eligible residents, which is a little bit over thirty five thousand who are eligible to receive the vaccine. So right now, what we're doing is, we still have vaccine pods every Friday, as everyone is well aware, because you watch the news and you hear FDA-approved booster doses, which is different than the third doses. And now the CDC is also giving guidance on that. So we will continue to give first, second, third doses or full dose for those who are immunocompromised and who may not receive the same level of protection from the first two-day series, and a booster shot is just that, it's going to boost people up to get to the level that they need to be, that it might have just dropped a little bit. From Moderna, that's a half dose, and for Pfizer, it's the full dose. So there is a distinction between those, because one's a full dose, the one's a half dose. And so we're gonna push some information out to the newspapers, we'll be on social media, and then again, this Friday, we'll be at McLeod Park. And we will have a mixture next month of McLeod Park and White's Park, and we fully expect to see a lot of people registering for the booster doses. So that's all I have, that's just the public, yes. So the booster is, you just go to our same link, it's that bit dot O I backslash Chambers Coke vaccines, or you can just call us, or we'll we'll help you get registered. So we fully expect that, like I say, every Friday, we've kind of honed it down to one pod, so. That's it, unless anybody else has any questions, I can tell you, just, I'm gonna say this, because I like to say it every time, that everyone, not just in public health, but in the health sector, to our Chambers County employees, Commissioner's Court has been a super supportive, and everyone has worked extremely hard in this response, this last way, almost citizen. So we are currently increasing our personnel to help respond better in the future.
Got any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
You've got something on public health.
Yeah.
And I have one.
Nineteen vaccination capacity contract going department. PSHS and Chambers County Public Health in the United States, one million, nineteen one twenty seven, with a new contract amount of six million, forty four, three seventy seven increase, COVID nineteen vaccination capacity for a jurisdiction.
Yes, so basically, and we originally got, I think, or received four point nine million dollars, we didn't receive it, it's out there for us to get reimbursed for. That was back in the spring, and that was to increase our vaccination capacity throughout the county to make sure that everyone has equal access to the vaccine, and especially those who have been possibly been disproportionately affected by COVID and and have not received a vaccine. Then, so that that was like a four point five, I can't remember, well, I can probably look when it goes, maybe, it was four point nine million dollars, and that was back in the spring. They just sent another round of funding for us to apply for, and this is to further make sure that not just COVID, but nineteen vaccines, but that all vaccines for all vaccine preventable diseases include, you know, just everything there. We need to combine our efforts to really reach those people who may be disproportionately affected. So that's why, so we were awarded another one point one million dollars, they amended their original contract, so now it's this six, that you have, six point two, I think, is you have, so.
Questions on my office? We're still contact tracing?
We are still contact tracing, and we are about to go through a shift with the state, they are getting, they have done away with their Texas Health Trace, which was their big push. Some political things happened, and so anyway, now they're reverting back to the old system, which is a little antiquated, and they've developed some modules in that. But but because of that will cause us to transition over all of our cases, and these new modules likely will not have some contact tracing, and then we will have to revert back to some of our old ways. There's a lot of, there's a lot of politics behind contact tracing and case investigations, even during a communicable decision in a pandemic, so.
I think I bet we've done very well, Joe, especially Rice Festival, Beta Fest, and everything, I mean, there's really been.
Rice Festival, Beta Fest, and everything, I mean, there's really been no big spike after any of those events that you noticed.
No, we've really, um, you know, I think when school started back, everyone saw across the board, there was a huge jump in school cases um, in all parts of the county, and I know the school districts were really on top of that, encouraging masking, pushing vaccinations. And two of the schools allowed us, and their schools want us to come back to push vaccinations. Um, but as they did, other, they got really creative on how to mitigate and ask their teachers to wear masks and things like that. Um, they followed a lot of protocols and all the numbers, I mean, I think there was like one case in one of the schools the other day, zero. We've really gone, and at one point, you know, they, we were over one Anawak, I know, close to a hundred, and Barbara School way over that. So we're extremely proud, I can't say enough about the schools and their involvement, and they're really, um, driving force to protect, you know, all of their students and staff, and even the public, because those students live with, with parents and with siblings, so.
I mean, my grandkids are gonna have a Halloween party, I mean, they're going, but there's no outside party, so they're continuing to take their culture.
Yeah. And we, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna predict anything, we're not, we are preparing as if this is possibly, you know, there may be another wave during Christmas, I think we've kind of seen this cycle over. Uh, we just want to be prepared in case that happens, we're not trying to be reactive again, we're being proactive, so.
Yeah, and I'm proud of our team and how we have dealt with this, and then, you know, I doubt anybody's mind, this is, this was, is a disaster, and it's, I'm proud of our team, and now we're handling, it's not just public health, I mean, as far as management, it's support from commissioners, it's EMS, and and all the other departments, and from time to time, we'll make. Alright, thank you, man.
No other questions on that?
Okay, thank you. Alright, one point. For discussing said resolution expressing great appreciation, participation in twenty twenty-one Veteran Fall. That was actually Saturday at my W Park, and uh, this resolution was presented to the veterans there. Chambers County recognizes that the flag of America stands for strong, firm, and beautiful thanks, only to the enormous efforts and memorable sacrifices made by veterans. Members of the Chambers County Commissioners Court salute and express great appreciation for all veterans. Where they'll live back to church and partnered with the Chamber, West Chambers County Chamber of Commerce to publicly recognize all West Chambers County veterans for their service through the annual Veteran Fall event at my W. This special event was established in two thousand seventeen, and includes a parade, presentation of colors, special speakers, and invitation. Whereas the two thousand twenty-one Veteran Fall presentation will be, uh, was held on October twenty-third in Mont Belvin, Texas. And it will now therefore be resolved that members of Chambers County Commission Court hereby express the pride and participation for, at participating in the twenty twenty-one Veteran Fall presentation, and express great appreciation to residents, organization, and businesses that make this possible, and even greater gratitude to veterans who are recognized today. Okay. Close to my Commissioner's Court, second back to Commissioner's Court, and all those said, bye. Alright, three point. I get too many notes on this, yeah. One point three, discuss considering burning ownership of one point six acres of the Goss Library land back to Barbara's last day of construction of the new school. The letter is backed from I pull.
We had a lot of parking and everything.
We, we need to park it too, for elections, especially. I don't know, you already said it, let's keep it on the floor. I motion back, Commissioner Combs, second back to Mr. Gore, Chris Hammond.
So, we had, when the library was built, it was built with intention of future expansion. So I have a layout that Jeff sent, I believe.
Did Valerie send us something also?
Yeah, it, it comes from Jeff.
Okay.
She reached out.
Yeah, get him, come here. Go ahead.
So if you look at the if you look at that, uh, directly conflicts with what we're offering back to the school.
So I, I know there was a, a, a future plan to expand library.
Hi, good morning, Jeff Chapman, PBK.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it, and it, um, so it reaches out into this parking area?
Yeah.
It was discussing?
Yeah, please.
So on the west side of that drawing, we had originally planned for future parking. And so that's what the big section is, and then we had planned that the library could essentially double in size on that plot of land, and that's why the library was built kind of for John Hall Drive. Now, then there's not, there's not a political decision, that is just the planning that we did, and so she asked me to send a diagram of the planning that PBK did for future expansion. And so I sent it to her.
Yeah, and she sent that out.
Okay.
At the, I think everyone does. So if that's gonna be parking, is there any reason, and I'm asking, is there any reason you can't expand to the north where the car parking is? At some point, if you need to? Because you'll have all this parking to the west.
Yeah.
Well, what, what we're offering the school goes right up against, right up to the building, so.
You want your home to be building?
No, you would cover up the, the building expansion area.
Yes, and what I'm saying is she possible to expand to the north, and use this parking, take away some of that parking, use this parking. I don't know, I mean, the school's gracious and donate to us, and they need it back now. But have you visited with the school, your architect?
I have not.
Have you talked to Bo or anybody over there?
I haven't, I just got to you.
Yeah, and Paul's available if we need to talk to him. I think that to the west of, of this, um, where it says about one point six acres, that's what the school's going in, and parking is between the library and the If you have questions, go on me, but I'm pretty, it's pretty simple. Alright, motion second. Judge, I'd kind of like to, uh, withdraw my motion until we visit Dr. Cool on this, to make sure we're all on the same page.
I agree, Judge.
Thank you.
You're sending a second, she said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Maybe we can take it, maybe we can go way back a little bit last week.
Well, hopefully Jeff can go with the school and discuss that and work something out.
Yes, sir, we can get a bet- better sketch with more than one day notes.
Okay. If you will, uh, man.
I got a pen.
So if you'll give the school, and look at, I, if, if this, if, if they need all this, um, what's, where can we expand in the future? You know, can we go north and use other parking, and then just look at those options? And I, oh, maybe, and I need to know, Bo.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, we will table one point three.
You go, dude?
I am. That's all I can understand what's going. She's painting. Alright, one point, uh, we're done with the ones, well, three point two, discuss consider restricting pump detention to fifty percent pump, fifty percent gravity combination, or tension outfalls, including future projects currently in design. No, but he's got, uh, yeah, let's see what he said, I recommend approval of this item, this matches what is in Harris County.
Yeah, actually, I talked to him about that, uh, I've done work in Harris County, and I think he just copied pretty much what he does. What it does, it gives any pump detention has to be, can only be fifty percent, fifty percent has to be gravity down. I mean, knowing, oh, fifty percent.
Good with it?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with it.
It's really the same one, you know, Harris County.
Uh, let it down most.
Second.
Listen back, Mr. Tass, second back from Mr. Hammond. You know, questions, comments, those in favor? Post motion carries, three point three, six of rebidding for county-wide roadways dropping, that's a no-brainer when you do it, because.
Yes. So many.
First, my Commissioner Gore, second back, Mr. Tass. No questions, those in favor?
Alright.
Post motion carries, three point four, discuss consider requiring add list fourteen filed along the way in Chambers County.
Can we take that?
That, yeah, and, and Cory's recommending table that one also, three four. So we will table three point four.
We kind of wanted that out publicly.
Yeah, and if you want to discuss a little bit before we actually table it on time, that, you know, we're gonna have to go to it sooner later. And we don't know what, when.
The reasoning that we're asking the table is to allow us time to sit down with, uh, some of the industrial developers and discuss how we transition it in.
Yeah, go.
And, uh, we're trying to schedule a meeting for next week.
Good. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I think we, we go to it, and we need to go to it, and it's for residential developments to and not so much industrial, but we're gonna, we're gonna affect everyone.
You know, it, it needs to be for everybody, and it's inevitable that we're gonna do it, but, you know, they've just already got a lot of stuff going, and we just need to make sure it's paced in, something that's reasonable.
Table three point five, discuss consider one hundred thousand dollar donation request from Enterprise Products, road repair efforts completed on Hatchville Road. He's got a letter in the patch, boring.
Judge, I'm asked that we pull that item for now, we need to consult with counsel some more.
Okay, you know, table with the book.
Can we table it?
We table it, it'll come back in our score.
Okay, let's table it.
Okay.
We'll have the then to advance for by then.
Okay, three point five, table. As, are they finalized, are the road finalized?
Yes.
It's good?
Yep, so Enterprise spent four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Exxon's been a hundred.
And Exxon donate, uh, contributed a hundred of that, so their final bill was three hundred and ninety-five thousand, so.
Yes, and that's to contribute one hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's fair.
I would need to make sure.
Right, maintenance buildings, seven point one, discuss consider update from PBK Architects. On status of the winning Anawak West, uh, baseball complex. Let's schedule for eleven thirty, is eleven thirty yet?
Yes, sir.
I had you.
I've got a, that's right, if you want.
I'll see you take care of that.
Very nice.
Jeff Chapman, PBK.
Uh, while he's doing that, let's go to seven two, discussing consider approving a professional service agreement, H one K, H one K. For continued design of Justice Center temporary minimum security female dormitory design. I know that's court, the contract was approved for me to sign, it's legal finishes for the minimum security female dormitory. Mr. Brandmark is reviewing the other one for the Justice Center. I talked to him yesterday, I don't know if you talked to him too. Yeah, he said he's still reviewing it. Um, so we can table it, you can do the same thing you did at the last one, give me a party sign, once legal counsel.
Now, I, I think we need to, uh, approve it and give you authority to sign it, and I, I will, uh, make the motion that we do approve it. The rates have came back, well, let me make a statement for the motion.
Before you make one.
Yeah, before I make the motion. Originally, they were, they were quoted at eight point six three percent. And we looked back and put, did pull the correspondence and the information that we had had, uh, before. So what was before us last, uh, court was six million, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And, uh, Commissioner Hammond and I questioned that, and now the new rate will be six million, two hundred and thirty, uh, thousand, four hundred and three, that's a savings of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for, just looking back, but they will honor the old percentage. The construction cost has gone up, so the overall dollars have gone up. But, uh, I will, I will make a motion that we approve, uh, the contract with a eight point one three percent, so.
Up to eight point one three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we still may be able to negotiate that. Alright, so I got a motion and a second to approve the contract pending legal, and allow me to sign it, can include that in your motion?
Yes, sir.
He is, but I don't know, I mean, I don't think we're ready to visit with him yet, so. I got motion back to Mr. Combs, second back to Mr. Gore. But Jeff, if you're listening, we do appreciate you being available. Alright.
Just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
So seven point two, it included, on this agenda included a temporary minimum security female dorm.
Yeah, and that's already been done.
That had already been done, so.
The motion is for the professional agreement for the continued design of Justice Center.
Correct.
Anything else?
Not sure.
Those in favor? Post motion carries, back to seven one, yeah.
Well, today, hey, Jeff, having me, just wanted to give y'all a, an update on where we are on the four projects we have to provide additional baseball fields for your county. So off to the, uh, West Side Complex, Adam McLean Sports, uh, Complex.
Hey, Jeff, we, there's a couple of lights, if you'll cut them, we'll see better, I think the first two. That's good, yeah, right there.
If you'll, uh, my, my, uh, clicker's not working.
You got battery in the clicker? Are they good?
Yeah.
As you may recall, um, whenever we decided to do all of these complexes, we reduced the amount of fields at the West Side Complex from four, or from eight to four. Um, we are currently looking at options for putting soft soccer fields in that area, um, in between. So here are some construction photos that were taken on Friday of the current site, and we're looking forward to having a groundbreaking tomorrow there, nine AM, um, weather willing. Move, we're moving dirt. We got storm infrastructure going in. Paving's going in for the, the, the drive, that'll be a ring road around the complex, as well as the parking lot, and then here's just for fun, the retaining walls at the box site, that's on the, uh, northeast corner of the property. And here's another shot of that, that ring road. And here's the paving going in.
That's a road and bridge yard?
Run.
Road and bridge, I'll just send it.
Yes, sir.
Michelle.
Um, we, we, we came up with some designs to name all of the fields based on the names that were selected, and so we just wanted to kind of show you these, we're vetting those with your, uh, construction group. To have each of the fields with a number on it and a dedicated name.
Big numbers, go to my W, you gotta walk up there with fields, be able to see them, big and high.
Okay.
Okay. So when grandpa's grandma's walk in, you go that, there's a field, and he goes.
Did we? Well, perhaps Jeff fits in, is there, you and I discussed about the scoreboard. George was supposed to reach out to some of the locals, businesses, to work with them to get sponsors on the scoreboard, which, I don't know how Jeff and then fit in, they'd have to have the names on them.
Have you talked to George about that? Scoreboard sponsorship.
Yes, so right now, we're, since the, the, the first scoreboards we'll be doing are the ones in Fort Anawak. We're, we're, we're talking to the bank, getting their, their, uh, logo and imagery ready to go, and so we'll be looking forward to working with any businesses you've got to work with our scoreboard company to provide those out there.
George is supposed to be reaching out to some of the businesses on the west side, if you notice, when he does, about sponsoring, uh, so I'm sponsoring a scoreboard at each field.
Okay, right. So if they, if they pay for the scoreboard, we can credit that money out of the contract.
Yes.
Running through them and, uh, and get the artwork so that everyone knows who sponsored that school.
Yes.
Sound good? So that, we need to choose one of those?
You can?
Or?
We'll, we'll bring them back bigger.
Uh, well, I mean, you make them bigger. Well, I mean, you make them bigger, it's choose one of those designs.
Mike.
I don't remember.
Mike Gaffer, Mike, come up to the mic, Mike, come to the microphone, state your names, so.
Mike, Mike Gafford. And have we got some metals yet on West Side for scoreboards? I know we got.
No, sir, as I, as I mentioned, yeah, so we're still, we're still okay there.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Schedule completion, May twentieth of twenty twenty two. Fort Anawak, you see, we have added since our last presentation with with you guys, the future parking that would tie into the existing roads out there as well as the food truck site that we've got designed. This is the Jim Sylvia Sports Complex.
Jim Silva.
She's the, so.
I get called Silva, and now he's getting called Sylvia. That's our our park director, longtime county employee, password.
Hooked on phonics is a little bit after my.
Well, that's all, Jeff, I forgive.
So for those of you who like to join us, what we have in groundbreaking over there at one thirty this afternoon, you can see it live and in person, for those of you who can't make it, we took a couple of photos of the dirt that we're moving around out there.
That's dirt.
Uh, Fort Anawak Complex is gonna have a little bit more of a red feel, so we did red, red numbers. But same, same kind of options for those signs.
For people who don't know, Mr. Humphrey's retiring.
I didn't know it, so it's a good timing.
He's retiring in December, and A I S D will be actively searching in January for his replacement.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So it is, it's excellent, it's excellent.
Winnie Complex, we've added some future parking there. Is we had the Cook Fields, and then at Chambers Parkway, we've shown a future community center, future parking there. As well as a drive, that future drive that'll connect on down, so this one, we may, we may want to flip and do the fields by the road first and have a a a second, same connection. So maybe weird for you guys parking on that grass until that parking gets there to walk over to those fields, but. We're we're currently in design on the, on these two projects, and that they'll be scheduled for completion in fall of twenty twenty. Anawak is in May of twenty twenty two.
Anawak, West Chambers, May twenty twenty two, correct?
Yeah, let me, let me double check that, I think, I think I have a typo on the, on the west side. Yeah, and the West Side Complex is June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. They got started just a hair later.
Oh, there's more work on there too, more projects.
Yes, Jeff, all these facilities will have bathrooms and everything like that.
Four ponds.
Yes, all of these facilities will have a restroom facility in the middle.
Have been, I mean, girls, boys, I mean, pretty good size.
Think. Let me get back.
It's enough panel for fields, I forget what the number is. I think it's plenty.
And West Side Complex has a little bit more because the soccer fields are coming in, and so it'll have four fixtures for after hours use.
Yeah, I I thought these fields, you had them designed where some of them could be used on outside the fence for, before spectators went inside, is that still how it is?
That's at the West Side Complex only, yes, because that has the the community center and a few more things.
Yes.
But the the rest of them have the restrooms right in the middle of the, of the four fields.
Alright, any other questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Fort Anawak, we're gonna keep that existing restroom that's right outside the. It'll be the new. No, the new parking spot for the food trucks. The existing restroom stays at Fort Anawak, correct?
So the, there's an existing restroom at Cook Fields.
It's a park restroom.
That's right.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it'll be sort of to the west of the entrance to the ballpark.
The, 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 same as Cook Fields, Cook Fields has a restroom that we are not interfering with, that will remain, that we are not touching.
It's not like a rescue over by the way, quicker.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right on.
Alright, other questions?
You said the groundbreaking for West Side Complex is tomorrow morning?
Nine AM.
Yes, sir.
I didn't get anything on that.
Lauren, pardon.
Maybe I'll read her in.
But. Stay tuned on that one, it looks like that hurricane's coming across, and it's supposed to be here in the morning. And so we may have to postpone that one, we're, we're watching that.
Yeah, I thought hurricane season was on.
Yeah, so it, it, it hit the west side of Mexico on Sunday night.
Okay, so tentatively, the groundbreak is the nine in the morning. I got two o'clock.
I had two o'clock.
I did too. You know what, did I, on my calendar, I had like thirty, because I gotta be there to set up.
Lauren wrote to you, so today at two PM at Fort Anawak.
Yes.
Alright, you have other questions? Go ahead, no. Alright, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Bye, consent agenda. Go ahead.
So if Anawak completion is made twenty twenty two, we should probably let AYSO know.
Yes.
Because.
No, we could.
Starts February March.
Yes, February March or season starts.
I don't know the player.
If you will advise them, Lauren, I appreciate it. Do you hear that, Jeff? Do you hear that? She say we need to advise Anawak Youth Sports Association of Completion Day.
Let me get with parks on that, they, they deal with.
Oh, that's fine, let, let Kirk handle it. Alright, down to consent, first thing one.
Yes, I want to discuss nineteen point ten, the approved the twenty twenty two fire in that general plan agreement.
Go ahead.
As I spoke with numerous of our smaller fire departments over here, the semi annual payments just doesn't fit their buildings. They, everything comes in early, but I think we need to stay with the payment in January that we have all these years.
I think it's simpler anyway. Alright, so do you want to?
I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to stay with the payment in January that we have all the years.
So you'll approve it with that one change?
Why don't you just pull it?
I don't know, we need to get the money to them.
Yeah, we have to approve the funding.
We have to approve the funding, but however we're doing it, I still want to stay at one time.
Alright, so you're gonna make the motion to prove it and make that change to one time of year. Most my question to Gore. Second back, Mr. Combs. Question, those are favorite. Oh, it's mostly carries, what else, Commissioner?
Skip nineteen seventy.
We're pulling that, we're tabling that one. Yeah, I've already talked to George about it, we'll table it, I'm gonna send it out to all the department heads, get their input, department heads and like officials, so.
Chief Lady is out there.
What number you?
The park rules.
What numbers? Nineteen twelve, previous standardized rules and regulations for all chambers county parks. Go ahead.
Chief out there.
Don't come back to it, we found it, you got no. Alright, let's go first thing two, more.
Um, I have twelve and seventeen, Jeff, so I'm good.
Alright, we'll come back to twelve, seventeen.
Nineteen thirty six, there's a typo that should read seventeen thousand, one ninety five instead of three ninety five. Or to the invoice. And then I rest of them have been addressed except for number forty two.
You want to make a motion thirty six to approve to pay that amount?
Just, I just wanted to correction on that dollar amount.
Go ahead.
Nineteen forty two, minutes from October twelfth. Item twenty one, ten, two ninety three, it was amended motion made by Commissioner Combs on the votes, and that should read six hundred votes for Alicia Turner and six hundred votes for Joey Pressnell, so.
So that correction to the.
Yeah, it was just, like, we caught the amendment, but.
Exact same time.
Yeah, exact same number, so. Both should just.
On page five forty five.
Yeah, five forty five.
Alright, thank you.
That's it for me.
Mr. Combs.
I just want to.
Yeah, because it, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Uh, on the item number eight, the new Tahoe, refresh my memory, wasn't it, did we budget that this year?
For the purchase of twenty twenty third Chevrolet Tahoe, probably Chevrolet amount of sixty thousand seventy five.
I remember budgeting, I didn't offer memories of the V.
We did, because I remember coming to court as a replacement one out of B C, the one that they had.
Aaron, do you have a question?
Yes, there was a budget for it.
It was, okay, and then.
I put everything on that thing for sixty two thousand, seven hundred eighty five, lost twenty four.
But not anymore.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say.
I think I talked with the DA's office, there's forty something thousand what they get for there, so I don't know what the increased cost is in that due. I understand things were hard to get, hard to come by, I, I don't know, I don't know why I'm sixty two thousand dollars.
And item number forty, approved utilizing three eighty one funds to begin five hundred thousand dollars Texas drainage ditch cleaning. Corey's got that budgeted in his twenty twenty two budget, and I guess probably need to get Aaron back in here.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, and so what Corey wanted to do, I asked him about it, what he wanted to do is to pull that out of some of our road money that we got to three eighty one, we got four million dollars for it. He wanted to pull it out, and I told him, no. But he he wants to look at it as a loan and let, so he can go ahead and get them started now, and then pay it back in, out of his budget in twenty twenty two.
That's not true, we need to figure out, we need to figure out how to do that, but I don't know like that.
Yeah.
So we need to pull. Number forty.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll get, Aaron, you get the four. Okay, what else?
I I got another question for Corey, I should have asked him yesterday, and think about it, item number thirty five.
Lauren, you want to text him? No.
He's wanting to increase the inspection fee from three dollars and twenty cents per linear foot to five dollars. When I read the agenda item, it looked like three twenty is the actual cost, and I mean, that's a flow through cost, I'm just not clear on what we're doing.
You want to table it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll table it, you can get with Corey.
Can, can I, can we run along on that next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Budget is budgeted.
Lauren, text her on.
I'm actually, I don't know about something related, so I can let us know that.
Okay, there's questions. Alright, anything else, we'll, we'll type, um.
I'm good, Jeff.
So I'm gonna go back online drugs.
Go ahead.
On the on the park use agreement, I'm just gonna.
No, you only get one chance.
Well, that's the one I was waiting on, chief, but it's it's bullet point number two, it says possession of a file on the subject to applicable state laws, period, that's what the sheriff said, you can put period there, do away with the rest of that on there.
No, I agree.
And so we need to just make the, where it says state law, split period there, and that we're in all valid permit and all that, just scratch all that.
Okay.
They just want to put a period after state law, what did the sheriff say?
Alright, you want to go ahead and make a motion to that, because.
But before you do, can I weigh in on that, you mind?
Yeah.
And I'm glad you brought that up, I overlooked it. We already have park use rules in place for some of our parks, we've actually got signs and stuff mounted at McLeod Park, and I didn't get the opportunity to to call and talk on that. You know, we talked about this many years ago, or a couple of years ago, here, remember, getting up standard, I want to do it, but I'd kind of like to look at that and discuss.
Table it, you two guys can get together.
Jeff, can we do that and get together with?
We're trying to do this here, I mean, I'm trying to, one, have a sheriff come, because a lot of stuff goes on in these parks after hours, I'm trying to give them leave way where they have the authority to address some of that.
We get together.
Yeah, we did, we'll take it like.
Okay, number twelve table, seventeen table, thirty five table. Go ahead and put him in, please.
We need a table thirty six to get clarification on those numbers, because one has some different numbers also.
Alright, I'm thirty six is table also. Hey, Ron, Commissioner Gore has a question for you, go ahead, can I?
Hey, Ron, can you hear me?
Ron?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, just, just a clarification on that purchase of the twenty twenty two Chevy Tahoe. I mean, I talked with the DA's office, and they're getting some, and I don't know what the difference is, and there's like forty something bags.
Are the turnkey, so it includes all the emergency lights, the sirens, the graphics, the radios, everything else that needs to go on the Tahoe for us to provide emergency operations. So ours is a little bit more expensive, usually they're about twenty to twenty five thousand more, once you include all the equipment on the, on the Tahoe, I think the base price of the Tahoe is forty one. And it's also the, what they call the police interceptor edition, so it's not like buying regular Tahoe, it's got the, it's got the better suspension as well as the, the, the safety features on it for when it's driving at higher speeds. Just like the sheriff department's Tahoe.
Yeah, and so the DA investigator is a regular Tahoe, basically, but I'll have some features, I'm sure.
I thank you, Ron.
Alright, thanks, Ron. Alright, I'm gonna take a motion to further consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Gore, second back Commissioner Task. Through the consent agendas, that those items that we tableled are full. And forty was pulled for the record. I don't think I've read that one. Alright, any other questions, comments, who knows, favor? Oh, most curious. We have something for executive session on personnel on the, goes under sale, purchase of real property. Fine, so we have one item, executive session on twenty point two, discussing share and sale, purchase of real property. So it's in, at twelve twenty two, with recess, executive session. There was kind of commercials called come to order after executives. There was kind of a commercial court coming to order after executive session, twelve forty six PM, no action necessary from executive session, so that commission court is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.